Okay. Good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday, October 19, 2023, and we're here for a work session. And welcome to our new boardroom today. Today's the first session that we're holding. And from now on, work sessions and all town board meetings will be held here at 42nd Street. It is, we welcome you and we ask you to come and see our new headquarters in your headquarters for government operations. Everyone, it's exciting and we hope that you do come and visit us. And so we're going to start with the pledge. And Tim, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. And one brief announcement, the bid has informed us due to the rain forecast for Saturday, the Halloween Fest has been postponed to their main date, which is next Saturday, October 28. Mark your calendars and be sure to join us downtown. We have a tremendous amount of activities throughout the entire day. And if you want to see a calendar of the times of the activities, you can go on to the bid website for further information. And moving forward, our first agenda discussion today is matters surrounding an update to the CECLAP portion of the comprehensive plan. And we have BFJ today, Sarah Hackel. And I believe we have Noah Levine.
Noah's not here today.
Okay. That's fine. So would you don't take the lead and introduce the topic first?
Okay, sure. We have been working diligently on the various chapters and putting things together in the comp plan. The next steps as Sarah will go forward and is the town board taking the next required steps pursuant to CECLAP so that we can establish a generic environmental impact statement. And that's really just the intro.
Thanks. Good morning. Good morning. It's so wonderful to be here again. I'm Sarah Yekel, Principal with BFJ Planning. I am working very closely with Noah and our team at BFJ. And I'm solely focused on getting the town through the somewhat complex State Environmental Quality Review Act. And today's meeting and the presentation I'm going to give is strictly on process and procedure today. It's really moving you into the next step of really kicking off the CECLAP process, which, you know, as you know, will last another six to eight months and will kind of follow the presentation of the plan or the completion of the plan with adoption sometime next spring. So with that, I think we are just waiting for Chip on the presentation.
Like six months.
We'll go with six months.
Yeah.
Here we go. I do also have hard copies, if any of you want one.
Yeah, we have.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
It was just in case the technology.
And it's online, right, Devin?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Next slide. There we go. I like it. So just today, we're going to cover, we were here, Noah and I were here back, I believe it was in July where we presented the full environmental assessment form, that's the EAF Part One, where we discussed that with you. And you declared yourselves to be lead agency because you are the only ones that can be lead agency for the, you know, adoption of the comprehensive plan. Lead agency is really the agency that will be shepherding the process through the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the only agency that can do that is the one that ultimately adopts that plan, which is your board. And so the next steps in that EAF process are really the review of the EAF Parts Two and Three, followed by what's called the determination of significance, which is where you're making a determination whether the project, what would be called the negative declaration, where you determine that the project doesn't have any potential for adverse environmental impacts. Or in this case, you're going to be making a positive declaration, which states that there is the potential for one or more significant adverse impacts. And we've outlined that in the documents that you have. And that POSDEC really then says that the town is committed then to preparing what's called a generic environmental impact statement. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And the next step following that POSDEC, prior to moving into the preparation of the generic EIS, is really the scoping process. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Next slide. I know at this point, you've probably all seen this schedule 100 times, but it's always good to kind of go back. We are finally, if you look all the way down at the bottom at that yellow arrow, we're in that Phase Four Environmental Review. And we're kind of following or tracking the draft chapters of the plan. And so you are finally in a position to be adopting your secret determination, your POSDEC, and then moving into scoping. And with the whole process hopefully completing in April. Next slide. Again, as a recap, I covered this already. In July, you worked on the, reviewed the EAF Part One. We are now looking at the EAF Part Two, Three, and POSDEC, and then moving into scoping with the GEIS to follow. In January, the draft generic environmental impact statement, which is that first document that's prepared with public comment occurring in February, a final EIS following in March, and then hopefully adoption of seeker findings and the comprehensive plan in April or around April.
So it's fair to say that everything's on schedule?
Yes. At this stage, we are on schedule. You know, things may shift a little bit depending on the timing of public meetings and review. You know, once you get into CECLAP, there can be a lot of given back and forth with the public and review times. So, you know, things may shift a little bit, but as of right now, we are, we are working, moving ahead on schedule.
I think Bob will agree, we had a really good steering committee the other day. That went very well, was very informative and like where we're at.
And, you know, yeah, I do agree, but we will do everything in our power to keep this on schedule, okay? Because we don't want to run into what we ran into last time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Completely understood. Next slide. Next slide. There we go. This is just a little bit more to bore you with procedure. The adoption of a comprehensive plan update is a Type One action, which means you are required to do the full environmental assessment form, which you've done. The town board is the lead agency. The Part Two you have before you identifies the major categories of impacts and identifies the magnitude of each impact. And then that Part Three form is really the determination of significance. If the full EAF finds that one or more potentially significant adverse impacts may result, a positive declaration will be adopted and a generic EIS will be required. And so that is the direction that you are moving in at this meeting and then hopefully at your meeting on November 9th, you'll be in a position to adopt that POSDEC and set the scoping here, or scoping period. Next slide. So once you're, once you've adopted that POSDEC, we will, you know, according to CECLAP, you are required then to prepare what's called a draft generic environmental impact statement. And really, a GEIS is different from a standard EIS, which you may have more experience with on some of the development projects you've had before you. But a GEIS is used to consider a broad-based of actions that agencies may approve, fund, or directly undertake. So a comprehensive plan sort of falls into that. It's an area-wide plan or program that doesn't have site-specific impacts. As I said at a previous meeting, at the end, at the adoption of the comprehensive plan, nothing will be constructed. You know, it is a policy document. It does not result in shovels in the ground. It may set up zoning or other land use actions to follow, but at the end of that, nothing gets built as a result of adoption of a comprehensive plan. So that is why it falls under that generic umbrella. And as part of the analysis in the environmental document, we'll be looking at what's called a build-out scenario, or maybe a variety of build-out scenarios, a potential sort of land use impacts that could result from some of the recommendations in the plan. And really, the first step is required by CECLAP in the generic EIS process is what's called scoping. Next slide. So scoping is required. This was a new requirement that the DEC in the state passed back, and I believe it was 2017, 2018. And it really, so what scoping does is it defines the contents of the environmental impact statement. It identifies issues to be addressed. So the scoping document that you have before you really is essentially a table of contents for what will go into that environmental impact statement. It is not any of the analysis that will be conducted. It really is just, you know, there's detail on potential land use recommendations that may occur, that may go into the comprehensive plan. It's just context. It's really for context for the public to be able to understand what do we want to see addressed in the EIS based on these land use recommendations. And then the second half of that document you have really is that table of contents. It goes through each chapter and says, you know, lays out how those chapters will be organized and what types of things we'll be looking at. Scoping also allows for early coordination with agencies and the public. So if, you know, if we want to send the scope to the county or the IDA or, you know, the public here, they get a chance to review and let you all know if there are things they specifically want analyzed in that environmental document. It permits the inclusion of relevant substantive public issues in the final written scope. So what you have before you today, again, is the draft. And that can go, will be posted up online once you've accepted it and set a comment period. And then at the end of that process, we will review all of the comments. And any comments that are actually substantive and relevant to the review would get added to the scope in a red line document. And then any comment, and this is a new requirement of CECLAP as well, any comment that we don't include, we need to include a section as to, in the final document, as to why it wasn't included, why it wasn't relevant to the work that's being done. Scoping must include an opportunity for public participation. We'll, we need a written comment period of 30 days is what is proposed here. So that would start, I believe, if you adopt the scope, the draft, accept the draft scope on November 9th, that would run from November 10th for 30 days, I believe, because of the weekend that goes till about December 11th.
Sarah, concerning this point that you just brought up, is there a public comment? I know there's written, but is there verbal, similar to?
That is not required. There is no, there's no, you can handle scoping however you deem most appropriate.
Because I know planning does scoping, right?
Typically, a written comment period is more productive because, because this is a little bit, is a difficult task, that a lot of what you may hear, typically what you might hear to scoping is we don't, we want this in the plan, we want that in the plan. And this isn't about the plan. A better form for that really is the public workshop, which I believe.
Sure, okay. Makes sense.
This really is on the technical components of the EIS. And so in that respect, it is better for us to have comments in writing because then it's easier for us to sift through them.
Right, sort them out and categorize them.
Really keeps it separate.
So to manage.
Yeah, and it keeps it separate from.
And it still gives everyone the opportunity to.
Yeah, exactly.
To say what they have to say.
And then ultimately, in December, probably your second meeting in December, hopefully, you will be in a position to adopt a final scope. And then we will be writing to that scope. Obviously, because of the timing, if we're going to have a draft generic environmental impact statement in January, we are starting writing now. And we are writing to the draft scope, and then we'll make tweaks as we need based on public comment. We're not going to wait to start writing until it's adopted because that would give us about two to three weeks. Much of the work in respect to existing conditions and all of those things can be done in tandem with the comp plan chapters.
Can I just ask, keeping, to keep on the timeframe, who in the town, is it you, Dawn, or somebody else who is following the town board's schedules to make sure that all these public hearings and resolutions are put in so that all these actions are taking place to stay within this timeframe?
All of us. All of us.
Collaborative effort, for sure. The, I can say that the draft POSDEC and to accept the scope is already done. It's in Minutetrack. I should have got a copy yesterday afternoon, so that is ready for the night.
Yeah, that is a critical piece here. I think on our end from BFJ, we will obviously be letting staff know the dates that we are targeting and we need to hit to stay on schedule. Obviously, you know, because of agendas and other things, sometimes those may slide. But I think collectively, if we all keep on it, because that is really the key to finishing this on time, is this hitting those. Because, because of the timeframes, you sometimes don't have a lot of wiggle room. You know, you can't do something to it 28 days if it has to be 30. So, you know, we have to be mindful of that.
I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that we've been meeting once a week.
It's been helpful.
It's really been very useful.
Agreed. Next slide. So the document for you, as I said, is the draft scope. Somewhere in the middle, I have to go, and I apologize that it's so long. Because we don't have yet a draft comprehensive plan, we wanted to put enough detail in here in the project description so that the public was aware of the direction of the land use changes or land use recommendations and the land use approach. So this has a lot more sort of heft to it than maybe your standard scope because of that. But we thought that that would be a lot more useful for the public. But starting on or about page 23, it really goes through the table of contents of the draft generic environmental impact statement. What's required, you know, CECLAP requires a cover sheet that just says that you're the lead agency, it has the written comment period and other relevant information. The document has to have an executive summary, followed by a description of the proposed action. In this case, that would be a description of the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan recommendations, and any subsequent recommendations or zoning actions that may occur would all be included in that chapter. It's then followed by an environmental setting, potential impacts and mitigation chapter. You can see the seven chapters that are proposed, and they do follow, which is typical, the comprehensive plan chapters. We are not proposing to reinvent the wheel here. You know, if you don't have a chapter in your comprehensive plan addressing a topic, we probably don't need to spend a whole lot of time on it. There may be some mention of things that aren't in the plan where they're irrelevant. But typically, the document as proposed will have a land use zoning and public policy section. That section really will be key because that will set up a lot of the land use and potential zoning changes. We'll have a demographics, housing, and economic conditions, scenic and historic resources, transportation and mobility, community facilities, open space and recreation, natural features, environmental resources, and agricultural lands, and infrastructure and utilities. Our subconsultant, LKMA, or consultant, I guess, will be preparing the transportation mobility chapter as well as 3.7 infrastructure and utilities. So we have sent the scope to them to make sure they were comfortable with it, and we will be coordinating closely with them. It's followed by a required chapter, which is called Other Environmental Impacts, and those are set forth in the CECLAP regulations. They deal with things like use of energy and commitment of resources, a section if there are any unavoidable impacts, which I don't anticipate here, but might be too early to say. And then followed by Chapter Five, which is an analysis of alternatives. CECLAP does require that you look at a no-action alternative, which in this case would be just not adopting an updated comprehensive plan. So we would be looking at what might happen in the town but for this action. And that's followed by, and I think that this really is the key to a generic EIS, is that subsequent CECLAP actions. Chapter Six, that's a chapter that's not required in a standard EIS, but in a generic, that really will set forth any future studies or CECLAP review or additional analysis that would need to be conducted as any site-specific action comes forward under the comprehensive plan. So for instance, if there are subsequent zoning actions, there may be zoning actions included in the EIS, but if there's something that's to follow, you know, it would set forth if it requires, you know, a site-specific environmental assessment form or a site-specific CECLAP review and any studies that might go along with that. So depending what it may be, you may have a requirement for a traffic study or hazmat, you know, hazardous materials, that's just your broad examples. You know, any number of things could, schoolchildren, any, you know, additional types of things that maybe get studied there. And that's a very useful chapter to sort of go back to and say, okay, what do we need to do if this is what's before us? And then the key to this whole thing really will be this theoretical build-out. It will be what we like to call a reasonable worst case. It is not a worst case. It's not to say if every, you know, if you were to right now do a build-out of everything that could be built under your existing zoning, the whole town probably might collapse. The same could be true under proposed. You know, you never look at 100% build-out. If you looked at 100% build-out in New York City, the city, I mean, the city already kind of is closed. If you looked at 100% build-out, it would never, the city would just stop working. And so it has to be reasonable. So you're looking at what will the market bear over a certain time period? Since the plan is a 10-year-ish plan, we would be looking at a 10-year build-out of sort of what the market in Riverhead could probably bear out, given any potential land use changes. So it's very tempered. We will have a lot of assumptions in there. And one of, because of one of the things that we're looking at is TDR, the transfer development rights, there are a lot of assumptions that will need to be made. And we would work with, with the steering committee and staff to kind of figure out what makes the most sense. And we may ultimately end up with multiple scenarios. If it's too broad to be able to definitively say if you, you know, are selling TDR and using it here, you could also use it here. So we need to look at that. That really is the key to sort of all of the analysis then that will be in these chapters. Next slide. So just this is the last slide, just in terms of next steps. We are looking to your board to adopt the positive declaration on November 9th. That just again is procedure, says we are moving forward with the generic EIS. Then you would also, at that date, accept the draft scope for public comment. The document would get posted online. The comment period would run from November 10th to December 11th. We would then work pretty quickly to make any edits to the document to get that back to you for your next meeting, hopefully for your next meeting, so that you can adopt it by the end of December. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to assist.
I want, I just want to comment on, you know, working with you guys on the TDR program, I think is doing a great job. Because the flexibility will really help preserve more land in Riverhead, and I think it's smart. I appreciate that.
Yeah, the flexibility is so key to it, but also makes it more difficult to study.
You know, the bigger step farther is with the PDR programs and all of the other incentives to buy development rights, TDR is going to be more critical now than ever before. So it's really important that we get this right.
So that's where that future actions, again, that future actions chapter is so key because if we make assumptions and we set, say, a threshold for number of units in one of the Hamlet centers or in, you know, downtown Riverhead, or, and in the future, something comes in that is in excess of those, in excess of what was studied in the generic EIS, then that future action section would really help all of you to understand what would need to be studied as you think about or contemplate, you know, use of those TDR credits in a place that it wasn't already studied.
Good.
And I think just, just in terms of TDR, the emphasis on what we need to do is really illustrated to us when we met with the Farm Bureau. And there's 7,000 acres still left out there to be preserved. That translates to almost half a billion dollars in expense. And so how we approach this is obviously the taxpayers cannot pay for that. And so we need to use a multitude of different tools to try to acquire as much of that as we can because a no-action on TDR turns into an unintended action on residential development in the town. And so transferring those rights not only does the job of preserving land and putting development in a more appropriate place, but it also will help with tax base because that's a really important consideration that we've been really mindful of throughout this entire process.
100%.
Well, finally, TDRs are being addressed. I know this has been ongoing for, I can remember well over 10 years, and that's good to see. And I'm sure, hopefully, when do you expect the draft of the plan? I know we have the, that little grid, but.
January?
Yeah.
Perfect.
January?
Good.
Because the next public workshop, which I believe would also be the committee's public hearing, is December 15th. So then the plan that ultimately they'll be sending to you would follow probably in January after the holidays.
Having that here in this room.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
What do you think the lifespan of this comprehensive plan will be?
Typically, I mean, that actually needs to be stated in the plan. Typically, the guide is 10 years. That would be my recommendation. I don't want to speak out of turn if it happens. I think that that is the timeframe. It's always good at 10 years to sort of look back. I do think that if we have done our job well, you hopefully in 10 years can do a much more limited update where you're just, you know, picking out the things that have been done and then setting a new set of priorities. But it's not this full sort of comprehensive rewrite. That typically only needs to happen if it's been quite some time since your last plan. So, you know, hopefully, we are setting you up for in 10 years. It's a quick update. It doesn't need to take several years. You know, it can be nine months. It won't require, hopefully, wouldn't require another EIS if it's just minor tweaks. You know, you can go to hopefully the negative declaration route. Obviously, something major could happen between now and then, and that may change. But that would ultimately be the goal.
Yeah, I mean, Frank had, Frank Fish had mentioned, and I totally agree with him, that we really should be looking at this every five years and not, you know, just to make sure that we're on track, right? So if we can tweak it then, because I think the prior comp plan, I don't think was looked at at all over the years. And that's why we are where we are right now.
Yeah, I mean, at a minimum, I mean, there's the five-year look back, even if you have staff, you task staff with even, I don't want to commit them to every year, but maybe every five years to go back and through and say what, you know, because at the end, we will hopefully, you know, we'll have an implementation chapter. So there will be a way of sort of tracking the recommendations to say, what have we done this year? What are our priorities for next year? And kind of work your way through it. That is using a comprehensive plan at its best. You don't want to just prepare it and have it sit on a shelf and never look at it. But, you know, have it and be actually tracking what you're doing and setting your priorities for the year.
The key word to me is the market. What will the market bear? We need to stay on top of what that market is. So, thank you.
It's always good to be proactive. All right. And I know, Dawn, you have spoken to that effect, that you need to also plan, not just taking that process, and you got to look at everything collectively. So I'm glad it's going in the right direction. Great. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks, Sarah.
If you have any questions, if you're going through the document, send them to Dawn. If you see something you think is missing, that's the whole point of the 30-day comment period, that we can, we can make any adjustments we need based on your comment and comments from the public, so.
Yeah, and that was made really clear during the steering committee meeting, that the comments go to everybody, so that was.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to invite Kristi Verity and Steve Shorger of the bid for discussion surrounding the 2024 schedule of events. Before I turn it over to you guys, I want to thank you for everything that you do throughout the year, day and night, rain, snow, working. Your events are great. There's such a synergy. I think every year they get better and better. So welcome, and we look forward to hearing what you have for 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we start with 2023 events. Like you said, October, Halloween Fest will be rescheduled to next Saturday, the 28th. So it's a little more time for people to build some coffins and sign up to hand out candy for trick-or-treating. And we need parade participants as well. So we're looking forward to doing that event again. We had a phenomenal turnout last year, so that'll be a good one. And then we have the bonfire coming up in December, which paired up with the Lions Club when the holiday parade. And then moving on to 2024, we'll be submitting our full slate, our calendar of events. We'll be doing 11/25 reflections, Oktoberfest, Carver Boat Race, the Poly Bonfire. And our big announcement with 11/25 is that we are going to drop it down to two events for the summer. So we'd like to keep it on Friday evenings and do one for the Fourth of July, as we've done in the past with the fireworks, and then another one in the beginning of August. We think, we feel that it's, you know, it's a big undertaking to do all four. We find that throughout the season, we, the event kind of gets diluted with vendors and attendees. There's so many festivals on Long Island, and we compete with them. And also, it's a lot of overhead expenses for the bid and for the town as well, you know, with your police department and employees that help us to produce the event. So what we'd like to do is drop it down to two and then shift focus to supporting some of the new initiatives in town. We see some, a lot of other groups stepping up. Townscape is doing some events with their Thursday night music series. East End Arts would like to do some things. And we like to work with the rec department and some other groups to activate Town Square. And we do some more weeknight things. You know, I could see something like a cornhole tournament on a weekly basis, and that would generate some commerce and foot traffic downtown to businesses as well. So what we'd like to do is support other initiatives and have some new things going on in town to kind of offset losing the two 11/25 events.
I think it's smart because it became clear after Patchogue started, and then we did it, and now it's up west. Every town is doing a similar thing, so to get ahead of that is smart, what are you thinking?
And our expenses with 11/25 have tripled in the last couple of years. I mean, inflation has affected us too. So the cost that we have for security and the porta-potties and dumpsters, you name it, are just astronomical. So 11/25 began as a fundraiser for downtown funding. What we do is we take any profits from 11/25 and we put them aside, and those funds are then regenerated into downtown and allocated toward grant matches and beautification and things like that. So we're finding that we just don't have that. So we're finding that we just don't have that profit anymore. So what it does is it really dilutes my time with the bid. And, you know, for four months, I'm an event planner. We have two part-time assistants helping, but it's a huge undertaking. Like you mentioned, Patchogue, I mean, they have a team of over 40 people that put together their Alive After Five, and we have two. So it's a lot of work, and, you know, as the executive director of the Bid and some of the other big projects that we have coming up, I'd like to devote more of my time to that. We have some alleyway projects coming up. We're going to be activating the, what's it, the DTR.
Yeah, with Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization. So we have some funding that the Bid in conjunction with the team has secured for the past few years. So the alleyway where the old Robert Jam salon was.
Yes.
We have some funds for that, and the alleyway between Maximus Gym and the Suffolk Theater too. So those are some projects that we're going to be starting to work on, hopefully in this off-season, let a little bit of breathing room.
Yeah. And then we have the New York State DRI grant, $250,000 for public art downtown. So there's, there's just a lot of management and administrative work with those grants and projects, so I, you know, really need to focus on that and then cut back on the events, and then, like I said, support other groups that want to activate Town Square.
The 11/25 is being cut back to two times, but it's still going to be on Fridays, correct?
Correct.
People know?
Yes.
And the other thing is why we have a captive audience, you can always use volunteers.
Always, we can use volunteers for all of our events.
And what is the easiest way to get ahold of you? If you want to volunteer, we, I know you're looking for help with the Halloween festivities and so.
Right. So everything is listed on the downtownriverhead.org website. I have forms for signup for everything, and then there's a contact form as well that comes directly to me. My email's hello@downtownriverhead.org. So any of those measures, you know, we can share information, and we can also give community service hours. So any of the high school kids that need community service hours or any of the groups, we do have some people reach out who need community service. They have helped us with cleanup and maintenance with 11/25. So, you know, we can certainly do more of that and always use volunteers. And even throughout the year, I mean, we have initiatives such as cleanups and, you know, just beautification, planting things, and marketing, you know, you name it, across the board. You could use volunteers and always have something to do for them.
Kristi, will you be able to give guidance to, I know Mark McGlocklin may have already spoken to you about the Entropy Task Force wanting to do a program in this, whether it be the spring or summer, about like Food Unites, having booths from all different nations with different food and multicultural and, and music events and so forth, like just a day of showing you how multicultural Riverhead is. But I think they'll need help and guidance, so.
Absolutely.
If they'd be able to work with you.
Yeah, he did mention that to me, and I've worked with Mark on a lot of projects. He has been our emcee, you know, at our events, and I've also done a youth program with him at the Vale Levitt Theater a few months ago. So pleasure working with him and bringing something to life. I think that, you know, just showcasing the diversity and culture in Riverhead is wonderful, so.
I just talked about it the other day at the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to share with everybody, but it's, it looks a lot of fun and a great event.
Yeah.
Absolutely perfect.
On top of the volunteers, I'm sorry, it's also important for, helps stretch our budget a little bit more is with sponsorships. That's another thing that I would like to make mention of, specifically for Halloween, you know, luckily enough to have Privet supporting us. Lewin Farms has donated all of the beautiful corn stocks that look great with the veterans' banners, and we also have funds from East End Tourism Alliance, so that's helped pay for some of the candy that we're going to be providing. So obviously, 11/25 as well is important. That helps stretch our budget to make things, make ends meet with that, but that's what we're always looking for is extra sponsors.
Sponsors and, and partners for some of the projects that we have coming up that we're working on, such as the, the alleyways, or we have a playground improvement project coming up.
Want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So we, we were approved for a Suffolk County grant, another DTR grant for $80,000 to improve the playground over by the community garden by, across from Griffin Avenue. Those funds historically have gone to things such as the security cameras and lighting, waifing signs and things like that. And while all of those things are wonderful, really wanted to do something that the community could really see and appreciate and, you know, bring something to the kids and improve that area as well. So we'll be putting down new substrate, new tile substrate in that playground, improving the existing pieces that are there, and then adding some new sensory equipment. So there's going to be like a little zone for kids to sit down when they're kind of overwhelmed and, and just have a moment. And then on the west wall of the playground is like a chain link fence that looks into the dumpster corral of the shopping strip next door. So we're going to put up some sort of a wall with, that has sensory objects built into it and whatnot. So really excited about that. And the community garden as well, I've been talking with their group, connecting them with some other local nonprofits. They have some support, people who want to help them with grants. So other nonprofits to work with to transfer, you know, funding and things like that. So the community garden should be improved and see a lot of changes there next spring as well.
I have one question. I was approached by a veteran friend of mine, and he said that the veteran posters along Main Street have been taken down for some of the events. Are they planning on going back up?
They're already back.
They are already back up, okay? I haven't been down to notice it. When was it yesterday?
I did it yesterday in the rain.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Don Andreas, for helping after work.
We have a, a calendar that prior to all of this rolling out, we agreed, you know, we're going to have veterans from in these two stints of the year, and then we're going to have, in the summer months, we focus on like 11/25 vendors, so that's kind of the structure we put in.
Also, I really love the idea of the, of the cornhole idea where it's a recurring thing, and people will come to play every so often, and it brings people down to the downtown area.
Right.
And especially as the, the town square is evolving, so I think it's a great use of that area.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's great to see people there, and when we do put some things out, you know, whether it's at our events or just, you know, randomly people are out there playing, I see kids bringing like a soccer net and, and running there, and we have cornholes sets that we put out, 11/25, and I brought them out for the Blues Festival and whatnot, and it's nice to see people utilizing the space and being active there.
Kids soccer nets. I love that. Think about that. I'm just curious, has the school been receptive? I know they have a community service program. Have, have they been work, working with you and getting students?
There are some school employees, some teachers and employees that run groups there, so such as like the Key Club or the Rotary Group and whatnot. And we, they have reached out, and we are working together with them, but the school district on a whole, or, you know, meeting with the guidance department or principal or whatnot, we've tried. I know that there's a lot of change over there, so I think anytime there's change at, at the school level, you know, there's things that they have to work out first, and working with outside entities is kind of a second thought. But we're very open to that and any, you know, anything we can do and any support we can get to bridge the gap with the schools would be great. I would like to see the youth engaged downtown.
Maybe you can work with them.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them and.
Yes.
Put something together and get a meeting.
Okay.
Events during the summer might be a little tough for them when the kids are out of school, but, you know, at least with the Halloween Fest and the bonfire or anything else, you know, when kids are in school, they may feel a bit more open to working with us.
Yeah, we'll see if they'll give community service over the summer.
Yeah, that's.
So let's, we'll do that.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Great.
What else? 2024 budget was submitted and added to the general budget. Anything else to go over with that?
No, not really. You know, we added an administrative assistant to help Kristi out with some day-to-day operations as a part-time position, so Jessica has joined our, our team. I don't know if anyone talked about her a little bit in history.
Sure. So Jess Guerra, she has worked with me on 11/25 the past few years, and then she, she's been handling the social media and taking on some administrative tasks, so she's staying on board part-time annually now and helping out. So you see some emails coming back and forth from her. And then we were able to add an admin and increase some of our budget lines due to the CDA funds. So we just want to say thank you to Dawn Thomas and the CDA team for working with us and helping us, you know, increase our budget so that we can better represent downtown Riverhead.
And your support as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, eventually the board supports that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's pretty much it for the budget.
Well, as always, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And it's good to see, and we look forward to the events next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What's left, does she have the bonfire?
The Halloween Fest next Saturday, and the bonfire is Saturday, December 9th.
That's about it until?
Yes.
Christmas tree lighting and menorah?
River Run, which is December 3rd from Tangers in downtown also.
That's going to be with the Christmas tree lighting, and then the parade is the following year, week?
Yes, yes. We have a two weeks of holiday events downtown.
Okay.
We've also been having collaboration meetings. It's been bimonthly, but I think we're going to go back to monthly, but the Bid, Townscape, Lions Club.
East End Arts, Suffolk Theater, CDA.
Right. We all get together.
And the Chamber, hopefully.
And the Chamber, yeah, let Chamber host it.
Yeah.
But we all get together, talk about.
That's great.
General proceedings, but also the events, trying to make sure everyone's.
Sometimes we saw, I mean, last year we saw some overlapping and people going in different directions, and where's Santa going to be? And it was a little bit of a, it worked out great eventually, but yeah, that's great.
Representation from the town also attends that, that meeting as well, too, so that's been very helpful to us.
Great.
Yeah. I think, you know, it's, it's changed the events and the things that we do downtown, as you said, when we started, that they get better every year. And I noticed last year, and then again this year, you know, even the community is saying that, like 11/25 feels like they're sold back to it, and it's more of a community event. And we've had many, many local organizations and groups, and some of the town committees participate this year, which was nice, and we put everyone in Town Square and did free activities there that was sponsored by Beconig Medical Center. But it's great to see everyone working together and then having East End Arts and the theater and the Chamber and all of these groups collaborate with us.
And it takes the onus off of you at the end of the day, which is great, you know, and you shouldn't have to be the only one or the, the ringleader, you know, everybody can work collaboratively.
Yeah, it's bigger and better.
It might be helpful to have some people come in from the rec department. I think that would be helpful, to be very honest.
Great idea.
Oh, yeah.
Cross-promote. They just had a Halloween thing that went out, but, you know, highlight the trunk or treat, but that would have been a great opportunity for them to cross-promote the tapings that we have going on for Halloween, so that would be helpful.
I, you know, reach out to Ray. I, I think they would appreciate that as well, you know, because they're, include them in your group. That's what I would do because they have a lot of good ideas, and I think everybody together, I mean, it's really fantastic what you're doing, so. Bring people to Riverhead and do something for the people in Riverhead. Love it.
Absolutely.
We'll see everyone next weekend, hopefully.
Okay. Hopefully you'll try.
Bring any samples, any samples for the audience?
We have an office full of candy right now, so I'm really hoping. I don't know what I'm going to do with it if it rains again.
You want to talk about the street closure? That's one change with the Halloween Fest.
Oh, yeah, so the Halloween Fest, we do, we close Griffin Avenue for the coffin races, and then historically, it's been, Main Street has been open during trick or treat, so there has been traffic, although there's been PCOs helping to guide people. But PD has actually suggested that we close Main Street during trick or treating, so it will be closed the same, the same plan that we do for 11/25, from Griffin Avenue to McDermott, so that there is still flow on Hotty Bear Way. And then they're going to keep the north-south access open for, you know, hospital, ambulance, whatnot.
Yeah, we need to notify the public on that, so somewhere, Devin, can you look into it?
Yeah, I've been sending out updates. It's listed on our website as well and the schedule, but.
Last year's attendance was absolutely phenomenal for the trick or treating.
Remember that?
And that's, that was with the.
Homecoming.
Homecoming at the same time, so we're, we're expecting a big turnout this year, and I think it's a smart move because you don't want, last thing you want is anyone getting hurt, so I think it's a good move.
Personal experience, very smart move because I was taking that wagon around and bringing candy and, you know, to stores, and it was like, it took me like a half hour to get down Main Street on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It was, it was a really good event.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Are you going to dress up?
Of course.
You want to give it up?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
It'll be fun, but thank you. Hopefully it doesn't rain, like every weekend, but good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thank you, Kristi and Steve. Okay, for our final discussion, I'll invite Dawn Thomas back up again to provide us with an update to the Town Square and related development, and this was the request that was discussed recently, that maybe we should have an update on a possibly monthly basis or so. And I think, Ken, you brought up the idea, so we're implementing it today.
Perfect.
A team.
So you guys are going to be sharing a mic, so if someone's speaking, just move it, you know, like this, like.
What'd you say, Bob? I can't hear you. You have to talk into the mic, Bob.
Mic police.
No.
Mic police. That's what we call them.
Okay, I'm just waiting for you. Got it. Just to, just to begin, you know, and we don't, we're busy doing a lot of stuff, so we don't get to talk to you all as a group, so we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on all of the goings on downtown. We're happy to just hear how well the Town Square is working as it is and, and what it's doing for downtown already.
Five?
Yeah, the, the phases of activation, I should say. Phases of activation.
Dawn, is this online?
This plan is online, so we're, I'm just using, I'm just giving you.
Okay.
Some slides from the activation plan that you adopted.
Fastidip.
Yeah.
Five.
Aptaphore.
He four, six.
Aptaphore. Where do we go in here? I think you're.
It's going a little back.
Yeah.
Going back, let's see.
That's good, that's good. Keep going back.
Slow it down.
No, this is at the beginning now.
Stop.
Perfect.
Don't go.
Okay. So you all will remember that we had these five phases of activation downtown. As you may recall, those phases were independent. They can go separately. They don't have to go in the order that they're placed. They're just sort of prioritized in the slide, but we're using this as our roadmap for what we're doing, and there's a lot of moving parts to every single one of these projects. They are all moving forward. We have been super busy doing a lot of the background stuff. It doesn't look like there's a lot happening on Main Street, although the Town Square is being utilized and becoming part of our activation currently, but the moving parts are many. So I'll just quickly start with the Town Square. They just need this closer to you. Okay. The grant status, so we have, as you know, the DRI grant for downtown. activation currently. But the moving parts are many. So I'll just quickly start with the Town Square. They just need this closer to you. Okay. The grant status. So we have, as you know, the DRI grant for downtown. We've been working with the state to get the grants landed into contracts, as we discussed the other night at the town board meeting. We get the grant award, everybody goes yay. Then there's a lot of legwork to get the grants into contract. They all require project descriptions, very detailed project action plans, and then we get a contract, then we can spend the money. Sometimes we can spend the money before, but in this case, we can't. So in addition to the DRI, you'll remember, we got two grants from BOA for the playground and the amphitheater. Those grants were for pre-construction activities. We, they're $200,000 each. We recently, and you have copies of the results of the RFP that was issued for both of those projects. We were excited. We got a super robust response to that RFP request. We have seven proposals for designers for the amphitheater, which includes a feasibility piece. And we have five for the playground. We're currently all reviewing them. And we will cull our thought process into some memos for you. Then you guys can take a look, think about what you want, and then we'll do a selection process. Then we'll contract with those people. We'll have preliminary designs for the playground and the amphitheater, which will be, the next step from there is construction drawings and bid documents. And those projects, the playground in particular, has a good amount of funding already. I'm hopeful for another lump of funding potentially coming from this year's CFA.
The designs that were submitted are incredible.
They are, and they're, and we have, and I.
See what's out there and what's available now.
I've gotten no fewer than five emails yesterday. When are you gonna award it? When, you know, people are anxious to get, to be a part of what's happening downtown, so.
When, when can we see a tentative site plan of the placement? So like, so I'm reviewing the projects, like Councilman Hubbard said, they're incredible. But I just want to know, like, where are all the pieces of the puzzle fitting in? So where's the overall site plan for everything?
So once you select the designer for those components of this, of this activation plan, then those, those consultants will create the site plan with public input also, and your input, obviously. And then those site plans will be preliminary. They'll be just about ready to go. And then it's gonna take some coordination with actual construction of other projects. And so I can, that's a good segue to the Town Square status. As you know, the Town Square was, the construction of the Town Square is fully funded, $3.425 million from the DRI grant, so we have the money to build the square. We're working with the master developer, Jay Petraselli, and we actually met with them yesterday. What is taking a lot of time is, in order to decide what piece of property is required for the hotel project, it needed close to final preliminary design, because you needed to know the size, entrances, exits, fire protection, and everything else associated with that. And so we finally got where we, we have us just about ready to get a survey of that spot and whether we need to do a subdivision. So that's all happening. We have a draft agreement now, so once we get to work on that a little bit. But we're hoping by the end of this year, that agreement will be finalized and that transaction can move forward.
Dawn, I remember that part of the problem was the parking garage, as far as that's going to need to be interactive with that area. That, that's still in?
Yep. So that's next on the list. So I, we're also working on the flood protection piece for East End Arts. That is a complicated and will be an expensive project, but it's necessary for the overall success of the flood protection and flood mitigation plan that you all have adopted. So, and we're also working closely with Crafted to, to work on relocating him, and we have potential funding for helping him relocate through HUD. And so we're working with them also. And I have a meeting actually this afternoon with he and a potential new location, so.
I understand those water damage in that building over this weekend, too. And I just don't want to keep investing in that building if it's coming down.
That was an unfortunate thing.
That should be another reason to fast-track getting this building.
We are. And I think really, I don't think it's unrealistic. And you know, we set aggressive goals in our department to move things forward. I think this is an aggressive goal, but I don't think it's crazy to think that we could have a site plan ready to go this time next year, like pretty close to getting started, put a shovel on the ground, you know, sometime in 20, late '24, early '25. I think that's the goal.
Early '24.
Well, you know, we're gonna be pushing hard. I mean, we are, we have been pushing very hard. We will keep pushing hard. That's how we roll. So, so then we can just shift to the parking garage, which is phase two there. As we've discussed and understand, the parking garage is essential to replace the parking on the southern side, the riverside. That will be taken up by the public space that's going to be created there. The preliminary, so you engaged with NDC. They subcontracted with two firms. One is Langin Engineering and the other is Level G. Level G was out at the end of August, doing the preliminary site work, just to determine soil composition. They did ground penetrating radar. They did boreings to figure out depth to groundwater, soil composition for, you know, supporting the weight of the item. And also just figuring out, because that used to be First Street, there were homes in the area where we're looking to stick the garage, which is the northernmost part of that parking lot. And actually recreate First Street through that whole section, so it'll look like a road again. It'll be walkable. It'll be lit. It'll have signage, sidewalks. So it'll be, it's not just gonna be a parking garage in the old parking lot. It's going to be the, you know, a very integrated component to the rest of downtown. So, but under, when they demoed those houses, sometimes they just leave everything underground. So they needed to do ground penetrating radar to figure out what was there. That's been completed. I'm waiting for the final report. In addition, we're doing feasibility to determine how big this garage should be, so we can price it and design it. We have worked with Level G on that. We have a preliminary report. It's going to be at least 500 stalls. And the next steps are preliminary design of that structure and level, because so much work had been done already through UDA, NDC is working with UDA on that preliminary design. The ultimate construction drawings, that will be by somebody else, but we already have a substantial look at what it could look like there and how it will function.
Were we looking at one level?
Oh, I think.
For economic reasons, you would do multiple and possibly.
So the footprint is a little bit short of the entire length of that back strip, but we could extend it further. So once we have the final numbers on what the garage is gonna look like, and they've done a couple of traffic counts late in the summer on Saturdays, so we have good new numbers for that. You know, we'll be able to report back. And then it's, how do we pay for this, right? So the garage, if it's 500 stalls, will be approximately $20 million. So currently, we're looking at a bunch of different sources for funding. One is the sale of the TOD property, the Court Street property. That looks like around $7 million. I believe the County of Suffolk will be, they're anxious to help us. I believe they'll be significant.
I reached out to them last week and asked for the $2 million.
Significant contribution. That gets us to about half. The other half, we feel pretty confident we can get through the raise grant. So we, working on that, and that will be submitted this winter and we'll know in the spring. But what's great about what's happening now is we have a lot more data, excuse me, to submit to the federal government in terms of cost, size, feasibility. You know, all of those details are now landed. And so every time we reapply for these grants, we have more information, more solid information. And there's more detail I don't have to get into, but I think we, we're working already. You'll see this next packet. We've changed consultants on the benefit cost analysis that gets submitted with that. We have CDBG money for that, cover the cost of that. But the consultant that we've worked, are working with now has done this for this type of grant in the past. We had been using somebody that wasn't a skilled person in that regard. So I think we, it's a little more money, but we have that funding available. So that's coming through. And we had a very great debrief with the DOT, US DOT. I think we had the head of the department sit with us and go point for point through the application and what we need to do. And it's all super doable, and we're all lining up for that. And we're getting ready to file that application, so.
Just one other thing. We had spoken about, just for the public's knowledge, we had spoken about having a substation there for the PD. So we're considering public safety first and foremost in the development of this area. And I think, you know, they would want to know.
Still in the plan.
Still in the plan, right.
What about the old police station, the Riverhead, the original police station?
Oh, High Ting. Well, you know, anything can happen. But, you know, we think it's important to make it very well-lit. And when you go to that garage, the, the skin of it isn't going to look like a parking garage. It'll look like a building. And then it will have all of those amenities, sidewalk, lighting, wayfinding signage to match what we have already downtown. So it'll look like First Street's been put back where it was, and, and people will know where to go, know where to park, know how to get to Main Street. You know, the alleyways that Christie and Steve were talking about, you know, lighting them up. We have the funding for that through Suffolk County DTR. Those are gonna be motion detected, lighting, artistic. So when you, you'll see, you'll walk, you'll, okay, I know this is the right way to go, and it'll get you down to, to Main Street quick.
Dawn, I just have a question. I just, and the number of spaces has always been a concern of mine.
I know.
Okay. And I, and I, you know, and I can tell you, what's interesting is a report that was done several years ago by another group of consultants said it was 1,000 spaces. Just in, I would like to see how they are arriving at the amount of spaces.
It's in the feasibility study. I have a draft. I think you should have it, but I'll resend it. But the other thing to remember is, this isn't the only place where we can do this parking. If we, and so we're trying to make sure we phase things so that they're manageable fiscally and scaled right. So there's the, the West Parking Lot where, where the Summerwind Building is there. The backs of those buildings really need something, and that whole parking lot needs some help. So there's, you know, we've talked about potentially another smaller garage back there, attached to another structure, to, to create a nice pedestrian walkway behind those building sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, all around, wraparound. And then another, and another opportunity to increase parking. We also can do other garages. So I think we have to just kind of stay focused on the immediate need, because if we increase it to 1,000 spaces, that's 40 million. And then that's, that's a lot of money.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggest.
I'm just, I just, these are, I understand what you're saying. These are the thoughts we're having on it.
No, I understand. I mean, I could never, I could never entertain a parking garage by Summerwind when you have the river there, given that we're having this park, right?
Well, there's a way to do it, which would enhance, because when you stand in the back of those buildings, you cannot see the river. It's, the angle is, it's obscured. And also the dumpsters and all of that, that's back there, can be all corrected, and I think we could really make it much nicer. But that's a whole nother discussion.
Okay, I just.
But I think that that's a potential location. There are other spots. And there will be some parking down in the river front area for accessible parking and some event, there's, it's all designed to manage event traffic and things like that. So, and then I'll just quick on the TOD. We're, we're in site plan with them now. And so that took the cooperation in addition to, you know, getting that building located between planning. But in addition, the building on Griffin Avenue was a question. That's been funded by the state through DRI, through Homes and Community Renewal. It was slated to be rental. We've pushed very hard for ownership opportunity downtown. So as a, as a really, we may be the second only in the state when it gets done to do condominiums, first-time homebuyer condominiums for workforce housing on Griffin Avenue. That'll be a mixed-use building. It'll have activation on the first floor. That took the coordination between the Courts, the County of Suffolk who owns the property, the State of New York, our office and the developer. It was, it took months.
A lot to accomplish.
But it was a lot of moving parts. But we're now all aligned and moving in the same direction. So we're pretty excited about that. And then what's next? I think, I just, I guess we can go to, you don't have to go to another slide. We're good. So we have to finalize the master developer here with Petraselli. We have to do the same with RXR. We have to finalize garage feasibility and preliminary design, finalize site plan for Town Square, get approval for construction. Those are the, the goals and objectives. We're using that plan as a roadmap. It's great. There'll be more public engagement on all of these projects as we move forward.
Can we create a public time span, just like the comprehensive plan, on a progress scale? That we, people can have an expectation of when they expect to see things and when things can be done.
We can do that.
So that we are, you know, we're proven to the public that we're moving, you know, as best we can on things and completing tasks. There's, I'm giving you a lot of credit. Your office is doing a ton of work. General public doesn't see what you're doing there and the late hours you're working. And so I commend you. You guys are doing great. But I just think, even if the public just knew, like, so what is happening right now? So what are they doing?
And we were happy to have the opportunity to do this today, because we don't have time to do social media posts or, you know, things like that.
I would love to see a written out, you know, timeframe, right up to the ribbon cutting of the new Town Square, like, just to kind of get an idea. And then we'll know if we're ahead of schedule, behind of schedule. But at least it also informs the public, including myself, that of all the necessary steps that need to be taken before things come to completion.
Agreed. I think it's a great idea.
Great.
So that's, that's all the news from.
That's all you guys did.
Economic development.
Hit back to work.
Dawn, I'm really, I'm really impressed that you got the first homebuyer on Griffin.
Yeah.
condos property?
Major lift, and I think that's fantastic.
Well, we're gonna keep working on it, because really, that's the gap in housing in downtown. And throughout the town is first-time homebuyers. You know, we want our young people, families to be here, be able to not move to North Carolina and Florida, run away from everything. And so to get inventory is gonna be key. And that's just one of the tools we've been talking about for inventory. But yeah, it's on the map. We're doing it.
Great work, as usual. Yeah, thank you.
Can you fix bail reform?
That's next week.
Not on the agenda.
Next week.
Okay, thank you. It's not on the agenda, Bob. Good try. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Dawn and your team. This is gonna conclude our discussion items for today. In a moment, I'm gonna ask for a first and a second to enter into executive session to discuss the following. We have two, two topics. First one is litigation.
Ken, please.
Matters surrounding update on litigation between Riverhead Sewer District and Suffolk County, and that will be with Reichel. And the second matter will be contractual, and we have two different items on that. It's gonna be matters surrounding agreement between the Town of Riverhead and the PBA, Hegamilla and Howard. And then the second matter is matters surrounding an agreement between Chief Hegamilla and the Town of Riverhead, and that'll be with myself and the board. And can I have a, can I please have a first and a second to enter into executive session?
Somewhat.
Second.
Great. All in favor? All opposed? So move. Everyone be safe.
Chip, do we go through that same thing that we did last time? It takes like an hour to shut this off?
Or do we just go upstairs?
No, do we just go?